Yeah. Nice weekend.
I was on the bathroom wall all day.
Pretty much.
Right there on Facebook.
Okay, you ready? Okay, it's nine o'clock and if we can get our attorney, Mr. Wilson, to sit down and we can start. Sorry, Bill. The way I like your outfit, that's cute for an attorney.
Thank you.
And give you that. Want to make sure it was on the record.
I was thinking it might be a day off for you.
Yeah, are you going to the beach today?
I'd be okay with it.
So, if you'll all stand with me, Jeanne Shepherd, welcome, Mr. Fair.
Hey, with me. Dear Heavenly Father, first I want to start out asking that you bless our county in the way of these fires. I ask that you banish the fires, Lord, and give supernatural provision to the people that are fighting. And Lord, we just ask that you calm this and bring it to our ends. And Lord, we pray for our commissioners today. Reveal yourself to them and bring them closer to you, each in their own unique way, that they may hear your voice clearly and distinctly. Speak to them of truth, integrity, justice, and fairness. Help them as they strive to help others, to right wrongs, and to make the world a beautiful place. We both pray that you would bind their hearts together with others in the community in ways that would not, that they would not have imagined. Let them declare, as King David did, how good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity. Jesus, we believe what you said. What is impossible with man is possible with God. Let their eyes be open to what you are doing through your church and the precious believers across the country. Give them a desire and a steadfastness to promote things that honor you. Cut through the clutter of politics as usual and let them hear your voice. Speak to them of honor, sacrifice, and purity. We are grateful for them, Lord, and the county and the work that you are doing here. Let the people of your county seek your face and come to know you. Bring revival, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Jeanne. If you follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Milton, how come you can be up there and not here?
I'm everywhere.
Milton is on the present.
That's interesting.
Okay, Jeff.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda by adding the BO CC, item one, action item, discussion decision, appointment of public defender.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agendas.
And we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, moving along to public comment. Anybody who wants to speak? Kevin?
Kevin, mark for the record. Well, to go from the sisters, uh, I keep wanting to call it a benediction, but, uh,
Invocation.
Thank you.
Benediction.
There was much there, whatever, and I appreciated all that or whatever, but it made me think as she mentioned King David. The scripture says that when you have a good king, the people rejoice. And then she was also using the word honor and such like that. And so I just wanted to add to that or whatever about truth being a big factor in everything that makes things go well. And so as you guys were doing a little bit of dialogue before we came on record, you were talking about property rights. And so just trying to connect that, the dots from my perspective, whatever, is there's regulatory taking analysis that the citizens can use to a certain degree. And, uh, when everybody's being honest and forthright, um, hopefully there can be a coming together and not a fight of how these things are supposed to go, uh, in an equitable manner. And just my last little bit, um, I steadily want my brothers and sisters to know on a grander scale, and of course, this comes down locally and personally for everybody too, or will, and I should say, a separation of church and state. I mean, right now, one of the things is that they're with the vaccines, they're saying, well, you know, there may be more of a push to require, if I can use that word, everybody get a vaccine. And of course, there is like a, uh, a caveat to that to where say, well, you can get a religious exemption. And so I'm just steadily trying to remind people that this, uh, church and state scenario that the United States was founded on, or one of the reasons, one of the principles we were founded on, uh, had a high purposefulness of separation of church and state. And as I got schools a while back or whatever, uh, to, uh, get the grasp of a great, um, practical understanding of it, uh, one of the things we can do nowadays is to go to Wikipedia and to try to unconfuse, you might say, and make it simple for people to understand how it fits together. Church and state.
Anyone else like to do that? The other. Milton, you're out there, you're in here. You're everywhere. Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Question or comment? Anyone?
Yeah, you could tell us what the five K is. Give us just an overview of the sheriff.
Let's see. Um, sheriff, ten thousand three hundred fifty dollars and sixty-two cents, repair and maintenance on the jail's generator. I'm Roden Bridge. This is for the, uh, Hill of Priest Lake.
Same, I for shores.
Yeah. Oh, it's the, okay.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Jeff.
It's under that agreement that we have, um, with the thoroughfare, so it's going to be.
Right. A lot of resources.
Restoration of Sandpoint.
Last but not least. That's another one for that as well.
That's about it.
A thoroughfare.
Yeah, the thoroughfare of Priest Lake, where the thoroughfare comes to the lake, there's a breakwater that's being rebuilt and broken down.
So they had a, uh, a road that accesses that, that they hauled all that rock in and did some damage to it. So they're, uh, refurbishing that road with some crushed rock, um, through contract. And then that is, we, um, as a board had approved a hundred thousand dollars to go to the thoroughfare project, so it'll be reduced from that. Okay. Why'd you touch over there, Claire? Anyway, I don't know if that, but I can get into, you know.
Well, you stayed generic with me for a bit there, but you did say a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. I, so the board, wow, two and a half, two, three years ago, back when the thoroughfare was just a idea, they said, uh, we all approved a hundred thousand dollar portion of the thoroughfare, um, rebuild.
It was our match.
And the state put in two point eight million or three, whatever it was, a whole bunch of money. And, uh, this is going to be reduced off of the hundred thousand. So it's, it's just kind of a.
It's our in-kind donation at the restaurant.
Portion of the income.
Because we're kind.
So the in-kind right now, we're putting in another hundred thousand or no?
No, that's, that's. A hundred thousand was the max. We're taking the rock out of that hundred thousand that you were going to give them originally.
You spend in part of what was budgeted for. That makes sense. We can go later.
Okay. Sounds, sounds awesome. Okay, let's go to clerk, Mike Chrisell. Hi, Mike.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. That's right. Um.
I had to work it in.
He did.
We want to tell them an Ella Fender story.
He did. Uh, we won't do that right now.
Okay.
I was the most amazing mediocre basketball player in high school. That was the time of the chocolate thunder, but I was, I was white, so I didn't get chocolate. So, uh, you know, I want to start off by saying, uh, the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay to reimburse somebody for one man's folly in a decision. And I just want to say that in regards to prior comments this morning, so.
Are we talking about the Wilson's dress?
Uh, no, we're not. Um, okay, Jeff, uh, before you, I have claims batch number twenty-one, the amount of seven hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Demand batch number twenty-one, the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-nine cents totaling nine hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents for your approval.
It's expensive when he shows.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
I move to approve payment of FY twenty-one claims and demands of batch number twenty-one totaling nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comments?
And so one man's folly. I, I guess.
I knew he was going to go on under that. I'm curious.
Well, yeah, because I see it out there.
Who's the man and what is the folly?
I think he stood up.
Oh, see, okay.
I've been listening to this for six years. Kevin, you bought that property knowing what the title said that you're supposed to build, build it above elevation, and you didn't. And you've been coming after the county and every elected official for six years. Anyway.
Well, hopefully Mr. Bradshaw knows that that's not true.
Well, he does know.
There was a BFE set at twenty-two sixty-three, and my floor elevation is twenty-two sixty-five plus seven inches. And so your, uh, dialogue there is not true to the public.
What is the building location permit say? I know I had a copy of it, but I think you're wrong.
But, yeah, I've given you guys all.
I believe you're wrong, Kevin.
Much copies of this.
I think you're wrong, Kevin. I look, I pulled the building location permit. Your house is not open to the level. I think it had to meet the, uh, had to meet the level of the roadway. Road track, whichever was. And you are lesser than both of those. But we can have that conversation another time if you.
All right, all right. Yeah, because, okay.
Because remember, honesty is critical, Kevin.
That's right.
But it makes good conversation.
And it's on paper, so, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, so any other question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. And next I have fiscal year twenty-one EMS claims batch, uh, in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. And EMS demand batch number twenty-one, an amount of three hundred and four dollars and thirty-five cents totaling fourteen thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty cents for your approval.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-one EMS claims in batch number twenty-one totaling fourteen thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any question or comment on the EMS batch? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Um, we will go to airport. Dave Shook. Dave, do we have you this morning? Or we, we have a connection? Hello, Dave.
Earth today.
David. Dave, can you hear us?
I barely hear you.
Can you speak up? Can you scream? Maybe stick your head out the window and yell. Maybe we can hear you from the airport. What, uh, anybody, what do we know, Claire?
This, this is.
IT working on it.
Audio's working. Is the audio working? This is.
Working now.
It is for you.
Okay.
It is for Jim. Jim, you want to do the airport, uh, one? We can't get Dave.
Uh, I asked that the county give everything they can to the airport.
Yeah.
Okay.
We already do, trust me.
Give me a read.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just read it out?
Okay. He's got his hand up.
Oh, he's got his hand up. Let's try now.
Hi, Dave.
Dave, can you hear us?
It's the mute button, not the raise your hand button.
Yeah, can you tap it out? Dave's hand is up. Do we have the ability to connect with him?
Trying everything possible.
It's on, Dave, it's on your end.
So maybe you could just sprint over here.
That's why you use the laptop in the room instead of the laptop.
Dave, can you hear us? Okay, I see, I keep seeing him going back and forth. Hello, hola. When do you stop?
We'll get through it. These are pretty simple.
Okay, we're just going to go ahead and move forward. Go ahead, who wants to read this one?
All right, we have the opportunity to lease lot number thirty-four at Sandpoint Airport so that the leasing can build a one hundred and seventy-foot by one hundred and twenty-foot hangar in order to store aircraft, conduct flight planning, aircraft maintenance, and other approved uses are described in the attached lease. I recommend entering into this lease.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to enter into the lease for lot thirty-four at Sandpoint Airport and that the chairman sign administratively.
Second thought.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Kevin?
Well, with Dave not being there, I don't know that we could really.
Dave's not here, man. Okay.
It brings revenue to the airport.
Uh, seeing no other questions, uh, we will move forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number two for the airport.
All right, and I'll just read this. The current leasing of lot thirty at Sandpoint Airport wishes to assign the lease to another party as allowed by the lease terms. All other lease terms, conditions, requirements, and obligations remain in force. I recommend approving this assignment.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve this lease assignment for lot thirty at Sandpoint Airport and that the chairman sign administratively.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving along to engineering. Who's doing this one? It says Spencer, but you don't look like Spencer. Well, you kind of look like Spencer. You don't have a beard. Is that the standard for the engineering department? You have to have a full beard?
When do the kilts come into play? I keep thinking you're going to show up in kilts next week.
Awesome.
Just waiting for the red color.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Brandon Staglin, Bonner County Staff Engineer. This item is a request to award a construction contract for the Midway Solid Waste Project in Le Cleed. Uh, on May eleventh, the Bonner County Board of Commissioners authorized the solid waste department to advertise for bids to construct the new Midway solid waste collection site in Le Cleed. Advertisements were published in the Bonner County Daily Beyond May fourteenth and May twenty-seven, twenty-first. On June eleventh, Bonner County held a bid opening for the following received bids. Interstate concrete and asphalt, four hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Onyx Construction Management LLC, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. The pre-bid engineer's estimate for this project was four hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. We recommend awarding the contract to Interstate, apparent low bidder in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents.
Great, thank you, Brandon.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county authorize the notice of award to Interstate Concrete and Asphalt for the construction of Midway Solid Waste Collection Site in Le Cleed, Idaho for the bid amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. I further move, move to authorize the chairman to sign the notice of award administratively.
Second thought.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment?
Kevin, more for the record. Well, I'm guessing you guys are all on board with this. This is moving from the Renko.
About it today.
I see. From the Renko site to Le Cleed.
Yes.
And so is this four hundred and eighty-six thousand just paving? Is there any, uh, buildings with this? This is all just paving?
Um, no, it's not just paving. There's a fence. There is a lot of grading involved. There are signs. There is, uh, lighting. There's, uh, water service. And there's a lot of other appurtenances to it. No buildings.
Yeah, we already have the building.
Well, I appreciate that, uh, but you threw out another interest, and you said water. So we're tapping into a water system that's there, and we have a septic system, or we're going to use.
So there's, there's no, no restrooms. Um, we're providing water, non-potable water for yard hydrants so that they can use them to wash dumpsters and the asphalt. But there's no bathroom. So no sewer.
Yeah, I got another couple of complaints just yesterday about the Renko site. Why aren't you guys doing something? I said, oh, we are. And this is it. Okay, any other question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, planning, Milton Allerton, who apparently is just on the present, he's.
Good thing you're here.
Zoom, he's present here.
Yep. Uh, host disabled participant screen sharing.
We get, uh, Milton's apparently disabled.
He made me a co-host or whatever, but he didn't give me screen sharing, so.
IT, can we get screen sharing approved? Jacob? With the laptop at the podium? Please.
There we go. All right, thanks. Commissioners, uh, this is, uh, an amendment to Title eleven, uh, building regulations. Uh, basically, these are, these are just some updates, uh, kind of timely uh, as things continue to change and progress. One is, is that, uh, letter B is exempting or recognizing that those structures that are built prior to the date that the zoning code was adopted in November of two thousand eight, that those structures shall be considered non-conforming structures and reconstruction requirements shall follow those in Title twelve, uh, three point four, non-conforming uses and structures. And then Title fourteen flood damage prevention. So just updating the code to capture that. The, the other change is, uh, in the past, we've had this exempt permit, uh, up to a thousand square feet. So far this year, we've issued a hundred and sixty, uh, exempt permits for structures that are less than, uh, less than a thousand square feet. They're supposed to not have plumbing. They're not supposed to be used as places of employment. They're not supposed to be used for, uh, living spaces, non-habitable. So the request is to change this to a small structure permit, uh, and, and charge a nominal fee. Uh, those hundred and sixty permits do take, uh, an amount of time for our staff to review them because we still review for setbacks. We're still concerned about the wetlands, uh, erosion control, the forty-foot setback. So from shoreline, so we still, we still review those and we just wanted to, uh, to update this and ask that this be changed to a small structure permit instead of a declaration of exempt permit. And then moving on to, uh, agency authorizations, uh, over the many years of the planning department, the requirement has been in place that when a subdivision is created, that, uh, property owners install a two-thousand-gallon tank on their property, uh, to provide for the fire department to have access to water when they come to put out a fire at their house. And not only is the fire district waiving those requirements when they sign off on the BLPs, they're also informing us that they will not use those tanks, uh, when they, when they go to a fire at that structure because they don't know how long that water's been there, what's it turned into, what's it growing? Uh, is it going to clog up their pumps? Is it going to cause problems with their screens? And so, uh, they're, they're, the fire districts continue to be frustrated at having to sign off on BLPs waiving that requirement. So, uh, we're asking that if they're going to waive the need, uh, continuously, that they just need to submit a letter and not make the applicant have to go get that, chase them down all the time to get that signature. So that, that's what this, that's what this is about here. Um, the rest is, uh, uh, this one is another one that's kind of important. Uh, a building location permit is only good for a year. And if you have not started on construction within one year, uh, then it expires. And you have to purchase a new permit and re, resubmit all the paperwork. And what we're finding is with the price of lumber and the number of contractors that are extended two years out, that folks are, are being diligent in getting their building location permits, but finding that they're having to ask for continual renewals, uh, in order to start progress on building that structure. So the request is to increase that, uh, for a period of three consecutive years. Uh, there, there is a nominal fee for asking for a time extension on a BLP, but it's not, it's not a rework of the entire permit. So that's what this changes here. We, we have several right now that are, that are frustrated. They can't find builders. They're, they're holding out for lumber prices to go down. You know, you know, they're faced with those challenges. Uh, finally, just, uh, again, updating some of our definitions. Uh, deleting notice of completeness, uh, adding small structure definition, uh, changing around the structure definition so it more matches what, what is really going on. That this definition definitely needed, updated over the years. Um, and that's, that's what all of this is, is the structure definition, defining what, what a structure is and when it needs a permit. This definition is different than the structure definition in Title twelve. Title twelve requires anything that's attached to the ground, uh, meet the requirements of Title twelve. Title eleven definition is different because it's regulating the actual building of structures. So, um, so staff has spent several meetings and months going over these, just to determine which changes would, would work effectively. Um, and this is what has been proposed to the board for, for changes at this time to Title eleven. We will be back shortly with, uh, adding an infraction process to our enforcement.
Thanks, Milton.
I got a couple of questions, Milton.
Sure.
So on the definitions, notice of completeness. What's the purpose of getting rid of that? And how do we know then, um, when a structure's complete?
I think it's the definition, uh, where it says written confirmation provided by the landowner or landowner's agent to the county confirming completion of work. Yeah, I don't know that, that anybody's ever provided written confirmation of anything to the planning department.
Well, so we're just getting rid of it because.
Since we don't have a building department.
Right.
We don't have that enforcement mechanism.
Right. The, the notice of completion is still here. Uh, it's still in the code prior to occupancy or use of any structure. The owner shall provide to the planning department notice. We deleted a written notice. Uh, notice confirming completion of work. So we're just getting rid of that.
Written or otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the assessment's office also does, does that as well. There's a little bit of overlap there because they're going to look at it from the assessment standpoint.
Right.
As far as completion.
Well, that's, I think, my issue is, is that how do we know? You know, I mean, what, what weeks, uh, what kicks the flag up so that they know to go look?
We do, we do a final inspection of the structure to make sure that it's built properly or, and that it in the right location, but then also that it is what they said it was, right?
If it's, yeah, so if it's exempt structure, previously known as exempt structure, there's no problem.
Right.
Make sure that it's twenty by thirty instead of forty by ninety.
Yep.
A pole barn instead of council.
Yep, we do do a final inspection, and so that final inspection gets transferred over to the assessor's office. They have access to our records.
So then, um, in the exceptions, um, be the all structures built prior to two thousand and eight. So what, what's the reasoning for this change? And I, I guess I don't understand. How, how is it handled? How will it be handled now? It just won't.
So again, when we, when we issue a building location permit, we research that property to make sure that every structure on that property has a permit. And we occasionally find structures that were built or added to the assessor rolls in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. And it, to determine, so you've got the third owner of the property now having to buy a location. So you've got the third owner of the property now having to buy a location permit for something that was built in nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-eight, or, you know, two thousand, whichever. And, and so it's, we just get a lot of kickback. And so it seemed appropriate to change this date to match the zoning code of two thousand and eight. Because when you look at the, when you look in the zoning code, uh, in the non-conforming use section, it states that all these structures are legal. Well, they're legal according to Title twelve, the grandfather, but they're not legal according to Title eleven. It's never really been addressed. There's nothing in here that says, eh, if there's a structure that's non-conforming, we have to go make it, get a permit. We have been doing that, though. And, and again, similar to the previous, when we addressed this with Title twelve several years ago, that same thing where we were making people, new owners, come into compliance with something they had nothing to do with.
Okay, so, uh, that's an add then. So then, from two thousand and eight forward, if it, if something comes up, then you will require them to get a permit, but if it's an unpermitted structure, but anything beyond that is.
Yep.
Whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion on this, and then we can go to.
All righty. I move to approve the text amendment to Title eleven, file AM zero-zero-one-four dash twenty-one. These changes will become effective upon publication and on September first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Kevin Moore?
Kevin Moore for the record. And so as we're throwing this out there and I'm trying to drink this in, I thought that this was like proposals. And I was guessing that this would go, uh, before the public, whatever, per review to, uh, get input. And so I'm, I'm guessing, or I'm trying to follow along, you guys just now approve this.
We haven't approved it yet.
Okay. But that's what we're in the process of doing right now.
Oh, no, no, Title eleven is similar to the other. Yeah, it just goes to the board. Similar to the other titles in the statute, Title twelve is the only one that goes to the planning commission.
And this is a public hearing, by the way.
All right. Well, it seems like a lot of opening questions there, but I'll have to try to mull or so meditate on this and to see what some of the other questions might be. So before two thousand and eight, uh, any grandfather is, is legit. But anything after two thousand and eight, if somebody comes in and buys a piece of ground, um, then those structures built that might be on that property after two, two thousand and eight would be questionable as per whether they meet the code now?
Not code.
All right.
You don't have a building department.
Okay. Help me with my terminology.
Just wanna make sure the structure, whatever the structure is, isn't compromising property setbacks, wetlands, that type of thing.
Then it's permitted and, um, it, uh, is properly described.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead. Uh, you need to go to the microphone, if you would, and make sure you identify your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Steve Holt. I'm, uh, with the Lake Ponderay Waterkeeper. And I, I sort of just wanted to echo, I guess, some comments from Kevin, just to try and understand a little bit more about, you know, the public process when amending, uh, code. I, I, I personally just saw it on a Facebook post yesterday, and my real interest was really coming, uh, to look at the, uh, the violation changes with regard that have been spurred on by the sort of the campground that's been over, you know, off of Lakeshore Drive there. And, uh, so I, I guess I, I'm just sort of wondering in terms of when we were to be aware of some of the nuances of this, you know, what's the, what was the timing on that?
Violations themselves?
Not the violations, but just in terms of, uh, adopting and amending a new code. It was my understanding that this was sort of added to the agendas, you know.
It wasn't added. It was added on the normal. It wasn't a special edition, like the post said. It was, it was added on the regular.
I mean, what, and I guess what efforts are there to sort of reach out to the public to, to comment?
Was this posted on?
Like, how would, how would I want to pay attention to this if I wanted to in the future? How would I know that this was happening?
Was this posted on your website?
Just like you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't. I got a Facebook post from seven.
Talking of Facebook is rarely ever active.
Right. You know, I was like, I guess.
Yeah.
But I mean, I know that there's a lot of people out there that would be interested in these things that aren't.
We post the meeting agenda on a, on usually Friday morning, isn't it, Claire? Yeah, it's posted in Friday mornings.
And so these changes were a part of that agenda, other thing. Okay, and then when do you anticipate that you'll be looking at, uh, the, you know, the recent RV, uh, campground violation and how that may affect a code change?
Go ahead, Bill.
Bill Wilson and I work in prosecutor's office.
He doesn't dress like it, but he does.
I believe him.
Why don't you talk to me after the meeting and we can discuss that, um, if I'm running a specific, specific violation? I don't know if it has impact on.
It doesn't have anything to do with this.
Yeah, it's not here. Right.
If you want an update as to how I'm, what we're doing with that, a particular one, I can talk to you about that.
Yeah, no, I was talking more, and we can do that. That'd be great. Thank you for that. Uh, but just in general, I think Milton, didn't you just mention that you were gonna be looking at a revision to this code based on some of the infractions to sort of shoreline development? So do you have a sense of when that might be coming?
Yeah, there's, there's just several things that, that work into that. Uh, and, and it's all timely because it's budget season. And so how we're going to enforce that, the, the process forward. I mean, we can write it into code, but if I have a process in place, then what's the point, right? So what we're trying to do is upgrade our, or increase the enforceability of our code. Right now, we can enforce it. We have a misdemeanor. We have, uh, civil prosecution. Uh, there's ways to do it. We're looking for an easier path, uh, within fractions, similar to a, a tick. Okay, so, yeah. Yeah.
That's why we're still, we're still ironing all that out, but, um, if you, if you want to get advanced notice of that, like, um, we've had other folks. You can always come to the planning department. You can, the public's get to you right there, or if you want to make a public records request for any proposed changes that are happening, then they'll just give those out to you.
Yep.
Well, and I think we should add this to your, this should be similar. Anything else that you're doing business-wise, it should be in your.
Uh, board updates.
Website.
Oh, sure.
And it should be, should be on your Facebook page. I mean, we've always done a really good job of getting this information out, regardless of what the public sometimes thinks. That information is always out there, um, generally. But in this situation, if we didn't, I think we're in error. I think that, you know, I mean, because if you want to try to try, you know, make sure that everybody is aware, there's nothing, you know, nothing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just difficult from a public perspective to have an agenda item come out on a Friday for a Tuesday meeting and be able to sort of digest the level of changes that are going on and what the ramifications of those changes may be. And then come to a meeting and speak to it intelligently. So, you, you know, in the future, if there's a way that we can get these things out there, you know, a, a little bit further in advance, I would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, Kevin off the record. Uh, so yeah, I guess that's what I was being concerned about. Uh, I think a while back or recently, uh, um, as I tried to follow some news, whatever, I think the road and building department, uh, they have a committee and it give me latitude on these terms. Don Davis is on this committee or whatever. Thank you. Okay. And so, some of these things, it seems like, um, it's inconsequential. You guys kind of just make it happen or whatever. But some other thing is, it seems like there needs to be a much greater lead time for a greater number of the public to be, come aware of, uh, something that might be more consequential to them. So this just seems a little funny to me, the, the speed or how this is all flowing with this here.
We follow state statute. And so Title twelve does require public hearings. Title eleven does not require public hearings. And these, and these changes today are just more housekeeping than anything else, just cleaning up some language that was either contradictory or non-existent that should exist, um, so we can better enforce some of the use in our code. Okay, any other question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And it is, uh, nine thirty-nine and, oh, sorry, we have the ad on, my apology. Sorry. You're sitting right back there, too.
The ad is here.
The ad is here.
She's like, what? It was an ad.
Yeah, I'm just shutting down.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm out.
Yeah, I know you're omnipresent.
I'm not anymore.
Not anymore. Been removed from the screen. Okay, thanks, Milton. Jeff, why don't you go ahead and read this next one?
Sure. Um, on behalf of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, we are requesting that appointment of Susie Jensen as chief public defender for Bonner County. Resolution, appointment of Susie Jensen as chief public defender effective July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And I think I'm gonna read the motion to, um, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-seven, appointing Susie Jensen as a Bonner County Public Defender for a two-year effective today, June, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any question or comment? You want to stand up and introduce yourself? Want to say a few words? You want to thank, you want to thank the Commissioners for appointing you? I mean, I don't know. Throw us a bone here, honey.
She may not be thanking us in a year or so.
Yeah, yeah. Why did you put me here?
Mike.
No, Susie's been the interim for, for a little while here, and she's done a fantastic job. She had, uh, she has a great resume, had great letters of support from everybody, including the, uh, all the staff and the prosecutors, as a matter of fact, so, very impressive. So with that, any, if there are any other questions or comments, now's the time. Kevin, got anything?
I could ask some questions, like, um, she's replacing somebody that's leaving?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're two-year, they're two-year contracts that we, we have the public defender under. And so the other contract had expired and it was time for change. Okay. See any other questions? Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Congratulations to you. And thanks for stepping up. And with that, it is now nine forty-two, and we will go ahead and recess this meeting and come back with the executive session. Five minutes.